Are we ready for roll call?
One second.
Hey, starting late, guys.
No worries. All right, I don't have my gavel, but I will call to order the meeting of the Verona Common Council for Monday, April 27, 2020 at 7:06 PM. I will begin with the roll.
Alder Person Cronin.
Present.
Alder Person Journey.
Present.
Alder Person Kemp.
Here.
Alder Person Paul.
Here.
Alder Person Posey.
Here.
Alder Person Miki.
Here.
Alder Person Touche.
Present.
All right, we will move on to item three, which is public comments. Mr. Sayer, were there any public comments?
We did not receive any emails or contacts from persons wishing to speak tonight, so we do not have any public comments.
Great. We will move on to item four, which is approve of the minutes from the April 13, 2020 Common Council Meeting and the April 21, 2020 Common Council Organizational Meeting. Questions, comments, motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cole, I think she was, she was first. Any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor of approving the minutes from the April 13, 2020 Common Council Meeting and the April 21, 2020 Common Council Organizational Meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Both those are approved. Next, we will move on to Mayor's business. I have a few things under there. Under 5A, we have consideration of candidates for District 2 Alder Person vacancy. So I believe the process has been laid out, but tonight, we're basically going to hear from both, both applicants. There'll be a chance for corrections, and then we will get a few weeks to think about it, and decision will be made at the first meeting in May. With that, Mr. Sayer, if you could get our first applicant up?
Who, who do you want to go first?
Uh, who, I guess who had their application in first? We'll pick, they can go first.
Ah, that'd be Denny Bear. So Denny, I'm going to promote you now to a panelist. So hold on one second. Denny, you there?
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Adam. I, thanks for this opportunity to address the council. I think a lot of you maybe know me, or at least familiar with me, and so I, you might think that me applying for this was a case of too much time on my hands with the lockdown, but I did really take this seriously. I, I was kind of worried when the original deadline was announced that it would be difficult for candidates to come forward, and considering the situation, I think that it's important to have somebody who can get in and work right away. I, I'm fairly familiar with a lot of the city development issues in particular. Of course, there's always some differences and ramp ups that you have to do, and I'm willing to do that. I spent 15 years on the school board. Nine of those years, I was president. So I'm familiar with deliberative bodies and communicating and cooperating with people of all different political stripes and various walks of life. Being the age that I am, I'm, I've been around Verona for a long time. Deeply connected to what we loosely love to call Old Verona, and I'm also around enough in the business community and other civic ventures that I'm, I'm connected to other people as well. So that's pretty much why I thought, you know, under this scenario, it would be, it would be a good time to just come forward and hope to bridge the gap until some suitable candidates come forward and are willing to run. My schedule is such that I, I've, even over the past years, I had Monday night meetings for 15 years, so I'm able to juggle things and be available. And also, my, three of my trips this spring got canceled, so that also frees up my opportunities to, to serve. So I have no aspirations to use this for any kind of political springboard or anything of the sort. My idea was to help out during this, during this timeframe and be available and ready to go, so. I will just open it back to questions if anybody has a question or specifically that they want me to discuss.
Sure. Any questions from the council? Alder Touche?
Thank you. Um, did I get the impression right that you're just planning on filling out the rest of this term? Do you intend on running after that?
I do not, Evan. I, my, my, in my paper, my answer to the questions, I did say never say never. And I just meant that in the sense that if there was a some situation that, you know, maybe nobody came forward or something like that, but my intention is just to serve. I, I think that's the best bet. Normally, it's best to have an election with, you know, people that come forward and are willing to examine their ideas and kick things around. So, so my, my idea is not to, not to run in next April.
Thank you.
Uh, Alder Kemp?
Hey, Danny. First, I wanted to thank you for putting your, your name forward. I appreciate that, especially given the, the current circumstances that we are all living under right now. So I have two questions. One, you mentioned in question six, you're talking about getting the Sugar Creek School redevelopment done correctly. That's, that's something that's of particular interest to me, and I'm kind of wondering what your vision is for that. And then, two, you brought it up, so I just have to ask, unfortunately, well, you know, what trips were canceled? That's really unfortunate. I was kind of interested in where you were going to go.
Sure. I had a beach house in Gulf Shores, Alabama with my granddaughters and family, and a trip with my good buddies that travel with, I travel with to Punta Cana, which I would have just gotten back from that one, and San Diego was the other one with, with a family trip. So, yeah, they're, you know, that's pretty much, I, I like to travel, and really, for the, for this foreseeable time, there's nothing that I see that would interfere with this. If I go to Florida or Arizona or something like that, I can work around the council's schedule. Oh, Sugar Creek. Yeah, Sugar Creek is, of course, you know, one of the great opportunities that the council is going to have to help shape our community, and I spent, I was on the downtown Visioning Committee several years ago. It, it's always difficult. It seems like everybody has the, you know, the, the idea, we take that as a given, that, you know, downtown needs help, but we never seem to be able to come together on what exactly that helped. And I think the Sugar Creek parcel is, how, it's very, very rare to ever have the opportunity to reshape a significant piece of a downtown like this without displacing citizens or, you know, bulldozing houses and so forth. And so I, I'm just interested in that, and I love to help shape that. I think there's, you know, we've, you've already discussed some of the multiple ideas. I think it's, the important thing is that to have the balance between new development, new residential, I think should be an important component of that, and then some sort of recreational or park, park type facility. I, I am not a pool devotee per se. I think there's a lot of, there's certainly things that could be examined there, but if that was the, the direction that the public really wanted to go, I think there, there might be an opportunity there, but the cost and, and as I know, Mayor Diaz is committed to keeping debt low. That is certainly an issue there, too. So if we bring in the commercial interests to be the driver there and use, you know, good common sense and a lot of input from our community to help shape that. So I'm, I, I would love to be involved in that.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions for the applicant? Alder Journey? Oh, you're muted.
Yeah.
Oh, now you're good.
Yeah, so I would like to follow up and thank you also for putting your name into, and willing to serve. So you had mentioned something with development within the community as far as filling in some of the vacant spaces. I'm, I'm kind of interpreting that as not necessarily going outside of the perimeter, but using space within Verona for development purposes, and I don't know if you could expand on that thought?
Uh, sure, Alder Person. Are you, you referring to when I talked about Sugar Creek? That, that's a more particular scenario there. I think the front piece there along, along Verona Avenue is, is, that, that certainly has commercial potential, and we need to look at that. But into what, when I was talking, my broad statement, I, I was referring to the, just that I, you know, I'm familiar with, with a lot of the developments that have been in the past, and you know, the various spaces that are open around town. So I mean, when we're discussing the, some of the different developments, I, you know, I know what, what they are, and I've, I've had experience with that from being on the school board and just my general knowledge. But I, I am committed to, I think that is an important piece for us to be working on, is trying to keep those spaces filled, and it's going to be even more difficult than, than it has been in the past. So we need to be smart with our, what, what developments we approve. We want to make sure that there's successful businesses in the ones we already have.
Thank you.
And answer that.
Yeah. Do you have any, do you have any thoughts on?
Okay. Sorry, I lost you.
Um.
I, I muted myself.
Okay, you're good now.
So, so do you have any thoughts on what types of businesses could go into some of those spaces?
Well, that's, that's a good question. I think amenities are what people are looking for, different choices in food and some of those things, but it's not really necessarily the council's job to, to pick the businesses that are going to go in there. That's, that's sort of the, you know, the commercial content of that. As long as they're appropriate for our community, you know, occasionally, there might be something that's kind of, I know there was a lot of controversy over the goodwill coming in, but there's sometimes, and festivals too, for that matter, you know, sometimes the, the, the council is not in the business of picking, you know, those types of things. We can't always protect our existing businesses, but we need to make it easy for people to come in, and hopefully, they will thrive. And I think a, a lot of times, people sort of vote with their feet. They, they go to the places that they like and that will, you know, that they enjoy, so that's kind of up to the businesses. But we need to make sure they're following our rules, promoting good development, being appropriate for whatever, whatever location they're in and, and those types of things.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions for the applicant? Alder Ricky, you have your hand up? Or were you adjusting your screen?
Sorry, I was, I, I have to push my screen to see a different view.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I couldn't tell if you had your hand raised or not.
Oh, thank you.
Uh, any other questions for the applicant? Alder Posey?
Sorry, had to unmute first. So, thank you, Denny. I've been through this process on your seat as well as then after. Thank you very much for doing all this. So my follow-up is similar to what Charlotte was just talking about, because one of the things that you actually said in question five was fostering, continue to foster future growth of our business community. And that really grabbed me, because I'm curious what you're seeing as far as what we need to be doing to foster future growth. And I understand that at this point, things are shifting, but even prior to this, what would you have seen?
Well, I think one of the things that the business community looks for consistency. You know, they can adapt to the rules, they can adapt to different situations if need be, but what they, what they have trouble with is when they think they're following a, a path, and it becomes, you know, all of a sudden, there's moving goalposts. Now, whether that's ever actually happened in the past or not, that's a danger that we have to be aware of. We, and that's, I was a little, I was unfortunate that the Economic Development Officer, we had to do away with that position, but I certainly understand budgets and, and that, you know, I'm not questioning that decision, but, but keeping lines open between City Hall and people who are looking to put development in, into our town, I think that's very important, and I'm glad, you know, that I'd be happy to, to talk to developers or anything like that if that would help. I think, you know, we have a great asset, and if there are people that are thinking about coming here, we want to make sure that they realize their welcome and, and, you know, in an appropriate way, and hopefully, I know there's, it's always, it's always a tough situation, because people are going to play off one community against another and, and some of those kind of things, but we need to make it clear that, you know, we are willing to help good, quality businesses come here, and we want them to thrive and, and pay their taxes and grow and provide good opportunities for our community. You know, the, a community that has good quality jobs right in there, that helps with many, many issues. It, it, you know, makes the housing situation easier, it makes, makes the tax flow easier, it makes, you know, things better for schools and so forth. So it all, it's, it's, it's all a part of the, part of the package there. And, you know, you don't just bend over backwards for people, but you make sure that, you make sure that it, you know, here's what we're looking for, here's, here's the procedure you follow, and if you do that, then, then things can come to fruition. Does that help?
Uh, other questions for the applicant? Seeing none? Uh, yeah, thank you very much for putting your name in, and as I said, the council will be making a decision at the first council meeting in May.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, Danny.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm going to demote you back to the, the audience. Just bear with me a second.
I'm used to getting demoted. Thank you.
Okay, I think next up, we have Charlie. So I'm going to promote Charlie to a panelist, so Charlie, be ready. Charlie, you there?
I'm here. Can you see me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. Well, I'll apologize in advance if my spiel sounds a bit scripted, but that's because it is. So firstly, thank you so much for your time and allowing me to introduce myself to the council and to the attendees. I'd like to give a brief overview quickly of who I am, why I'm seeking to fill the vacant Alder Person seat, and what I think I might contribute. So my name is Charlie Ryan. I moved to Verona in 1991. I'm a graduate of Verona High School. I attended Edgewood and UW briefly before relocating overseas for a number of years. While overseas, I lived and I worked in Ireland, Northern Ireland, London, and Australia for many years. I happen to be a dual citizen of the US as well as Australia. My wife and my three children were all born in Australia. I currently live in the Cross Country Heights neighborhood with my wife Rebecca, who is a special ed teacher at the high school, and she also serves on the board for Verona Public Library. We have two adult children, both who graduated from Verona High School, as well as a 15-year-old who's currently a freshman there. Professionally, I've worked in social services for about 20 years, leading organizations particularly focused on helping disadvantaged groups in our communities. So in Australia, I worked with the United Nations Refugee Resettlement Program to help resettle refugees from war-torn countries such as Sudan and the Congo. And I've also worked with state and federal governments sort of around the world to implement a broad range of other social services, including aged care, community transport service in the community that I lived in at the time, residential and community-based disability services, homelessness services, and mental health services. So currently, I'm a Director of Behavioral Health Services for a statewide organization here in Wisconsin. I'm interested in filling the vacant Alder seat, because I feel highly invested in our community and its continued success. My family and I specifically returned to Verona from Australia to live here, just because it is such a great community to raise, raise a family. I have a great deal of experience in working with communities, local community groups, business, government agencies at all levels of government to achieve outcomes for the communities I've lived in and worked in. I've overseen large budgets with nonprofit organizations, and I know how to find innovative ways to achieve outcomes within given budget constraints. And to that point, I did want to commend the council for your efforts in reducing the current budget by over 2%, I believe, which is no, no small task. So. Three initiatives I would like to champion as Alder Person are working to make a more vibrant, lively downtown area, which has been discussed tonight, working to provide more affordable housing options here in Verona, and working to provide a stronger sense of safety and security and well-being for residents here in Verona. So thank you very much for your time.
Uh, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Alder Cronin?
All right. Thanks so much for joining us tonight and taking the time to share with us why you applied. All right. Thanks so much for joining us tonight and, uh, taking the time to share with us why you applied. I'm curious, um, since you have seen Verona from two different perspectives, what do you see as the biggest change since you've returned? Good or bad?
Yeah, sure. Um, so I, I left, I guess, in the late nineties and I was away for fifteen years. So I moved back in twenty thirteen. Obviously I was, I was gone before Epic moved into town. That was a huge, huge change. Um, I, I think the population of Verona has more than doubled, um, in the time, you know, between I left and when I came back. Um, I think it's a fantastic thing. I think the city has seen a tremendous amount of growth. Uh, both, you know, economically, um, physically. So it's, it's really interesting and good. I also think that we're a much more diverse community now, which I think is a positive thing. Um, and I think it's important that we find ways to foster that. Um, and again, so, you know, to the, to my point around, sort of affordable housing, I think it's really important that if, if part of our motivation uh, is to have a vibrant community and vibrant downtown community, um, that, you know, the people who are living, um, in those, or sorry, working in those, uh, businesses are able to live in this community as well.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Alder Cole.
Hi, um, thanks for telling us about yourself and putting your name in. Um, I'm the other alder in District Two. I was an AP year co-alder. Um, I was, I'm also pretty passionate about affordable housing or workforce housing as we're calling it. So, um, I was just wondering if you had specific, um, knowledge or ideas on how to actually, um, implement and go forward with, um, providing more, uh, workforce housing options in our city.
Yep. Um, you know, I think it's important, um, several, several pieces of the puzzle, but, um, I think it's important to, uh, work with developers on housing options. I know, um, I've got friends who live, um, just behind the new development, um, adjacent to the, um, council building there and police station. And so, you know, working with developers around, uh, ensuring that there's a, a good mixture of housing. I, as I understand, I don't quite know what's in that building, but as I, as I understand it, they're more sort of efficiency units and more geared towards, um, individuals. And I, I'm not sure if that's true, but I think it's important also to ensure that we are, uh, considering families, you know, so like three-bed, uh, homes would be important as well. But, you know, working as a community facilitating work groups, I think it would be interesting, um, soliciting ideas. I don't think any one person or anyone, uh, municipality is the font of all good ideas. So I think it's worth soliciting, um, outside, uh, help and thoughts. So.
Uh, okay. Any other, uh, questions for the applicant? Um, Alder Journey and then Alder Posey.
So you mentioned that you had, uh, reached out, um, I guess electronically and got one hundred observations from people around Verona. And I'm just curious what your methodology was in doing that.
It was, it was super interesting. In fact, Alderman Kemp responded to my post as well. Um, so I got, I think around a hundred and forty, uh, responses as it sits right now. Still up. I use the app called Nextdoor, um, which is an app which sort of, um, geo fences, uh, particular, districts, I guess, or however, however the fencing works. Um, and so got a lot of, um, really, really good responses. What I liked about it, I, I thought it was sort of an innovative way to reach out to the electorate. You know, to my fellow residents, um, and get their ideas because at the end of the day, I feel like alderperson's role is to represent the community and to sort of champion, um, their ideas and their wishes. And sort of the things I listed were the, uh, you know, the, the things that rose to the top in terms of, the ideas that, you know, most frequently, uh, seem to concern people. So.
Thank you.
Uh, Alder Posey.
That was actually the exact question. So, uh, alderperson Journey and I are on the same wave and thank you for your answer to that. And I would be interested in seeing those results as well. So please feel free to email some of the specific actual data points. That'd be great.
Yep.
Uh, other questions for, uh, Alder Touche?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, thinking about the affordable housing challenge, um, I've actually spoken to a handful of realtors and kind of asked them why is Verona so much more expensive? And the theme seemed to be the cost of land. Uh, property owners around here want a premium for their land compared to our neighboring cities, towns and villages. Do you have any ideas, uh, on how to make it, our land more affordable, therefore allowing our developers to lower the cost of their facilities?
I don't, I can't say I have any immediate ideas off the top of my head. I think, again, I think, you know, soliciting ideas from, uh, people who are wiser and smarter than me maybe is a good, a good option. Um, I, I do like the idea. I think it was mentioned on the, um, the previous comment, something around sort of infill and looking at the spaces that it, uh, currently exist and what could be built upon or, uh, torn down and built up. I think, you know, sort of urban or suburban sprawl is a, is a problem or is a concern. So just from an environmental perspective as well. And I, you know, I don't know, um, if looking for those spaces means uh, necessarily equates to affordability, but I would have thought, um, that would be, uh, a vein to explore. So, that's a, not the perfect, not the perfect response for you, but that's what I have off the cuff.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions for the applicant? Uh, seeing none? Um. Well, thank you, uh, for putting your name in. And, uh, like I said, the, uh, second Monday in May is when the, um, council will be, uh, making a decision.
Perfect. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right. Charlie, I'm gonna demote you back to the audience.
All right. Well, uh, as, uh, like I said previously, the council will, uh, uh, consider this and we will make a decision at the next council meeting in May. Uh, with that, I will move on to, uh, item five B, which is the Arbor Day, uh, proclamation. And I am going to read it right now. Um, so the twenty twenty Arbor Day proclamation for Verona, whereas Arbor Day was first observed in Nebraska nearly a hundred and fifty years ago. And whereas Arbor Day is annually observed in Verona and communities across the nation. And whereas the city of Rona continues to show our commitment to the care of our urban forest by being named a Tree City USA for twenty-five consecutive years. And whereas healthy trees enhance our city in many ways, including increasing property values, beautifying our community and protecting our environment. Now, therefore, I, Luke Diaz, mayor of the city of Rona, do hereby proclaim Monday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, as Arbor Day in the city of Rona and encourage all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees in order to ensure the beauty and value of our community for generations to come. So there's that. We will, uh, now move on to the, uh, both the, uh, council member and citizen appointments. So five C, council member, uh, committee appointments. Uh, I kept everything more or less the same as far as the, uh, uh, council goes. Um, the only change is for the city-town joint planning committee. I appointed Alder Cole, um, to serve out the rest of Sarah Gaskell's term on that committee. Uh, I feel like it made sense since Sarah Gaskell was on the plan commission. And now, now Alder Cole's on the plan commission. So I, I felt like that was an obvious, an obvious switch. Um, Mr. Sarah, do we need, uh, council approval for this one?
I believe so. If you want, you want to do it, it's our safe and sorry.
Yeah, I, I, I think we do. Um, so then I guess I would ask for motion to, uh, approve the council appointments.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, I think that was Alder Cole again. Uh, second by Alder Cole. Uh, all those in favor of the council appointments, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, next up, we will move on to five D, which is citizen, uh, member committee appointments. Um, they're, they're, uh, mostly, mostly the same. The, uh, the changes are appointing, uh, Tyler Powers to the chair of Parks, Recreation and Forestry Commission. Uh, Mike Bear, um, was elected to the, uh, Dane County Board. And, uh, so he won't have time to, to chair that committee. Um, also, um, Paul Curtis, who is on the police and fire commission, um, was interested in retiring. Uh, so I appointed, um, Melissa Helgason, uh, in his spot. Um, and other than that, uh, everything is staying the same. There's a few positions that need to be filled on the zoning board of appeals. Uh, it typically meets, uh, once every three years, maybe less. Um, so I'm gonna try to get that filled in the next, the next month or so. Um, but I don't necessarily think there's anything urgent. And the, the, the rest of the packet, um, oh yeah, sorry, for the Verona Economic Development Commission, um, the chamber has an appointment and they have not gotten that to me, but that's, that's on their end. But the individual who occupied that spot left, uh, the place they worked. But with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the, uh, citizen, uh, appointments as they are listed in the packet.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of approving the citizen, uh, commission appointments and committee appointments as presented in the packet, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? That motion passes. Uh, next we will move on to item six, which is announcements. Any announcements, uh, from the council? Seeing no announcements. We will move on to item seven, which is the administrator's report. Uh, Mr. Sayer.
Uh, I think Ellen has something to say before I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Clark, Clark, I missed, I missed you. Sorry. Uh, muted.
Ellen, you gotta mute yourself.
No?
Oh, there we go.
You mean now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not so good at this, but, um, I just wanted to make sure that you all know that we will be having a board of review meeting uh, before our May eleventh. Uh, right. Just to, um, convene and adjourn, uh, to a later date, which will probably be, uh, sometime in August. So just let you know.
And just, just to clarify that, that meeting has to take place because by state law, we're required to have a board of review meeting?
Exactly. Within five days after the fourth, um, the fourth Monday in April.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Alder Journey? Nope, you are muted. Um.
And then the joint review board annual meeting? How will that be conducted?
So that is a, that's a meeting with, uh, the TIF jurisdiction. So that's with the school district representative, the Madison College rep, Dane County rep, um, the city rep and a citizen representative. And that's gonna be held virtually by Zoom webinar. So that will be, that, that won't involve the council. That's a separate meeting altogether.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other announcements before we go to, uh, Mr. Sayer's report? Uh, seeing none. Uh, Mr. Sayer.
Thank you. We have a plan and commission meeting next Monday night on the fourth. Uh, that will be held on Zoom, similar to this meeting. Uh, once again, border review is May eleventh. The joint review board is May thirteenth. And then we have the common council meeting on May twenty-sixth. That's the last Tuesday of the month because of the holiday. So, please just mark your calendars accordingly. Uh, we'll keep having these virtual meetings for as long as we, we need to. Hopefully in the near future, we can go back to meeting in person, but the time being, we'll keep meeting this way until we, until we know otherwise. Uh, just to fill our updates, uh, library, library has started their curbside pickup. That started, uh, I believe it started today or starts tomorrow. I forget which one, uh, today. Um, so it is going. Um, so if people are looking for materials, they can, uh, now pick up curbside. I believe you have to make an appointment though to, or call in to actually kind of check ahead of time. Uh, the city revaluation is ongoing. So if you're seeing those red vehicles in the city, that is a city assessor that is ongoing. We've had very few calls on that. So, so far it's gone pretty smooth. That's an exterior inspection only. Uh, they're walking around the outside of the property. They have no reason to get inside the house. Uh, they've been advised of good practices for social distancing. Uh, they have gloves on. They have the protective material, equipment on. So just so people are aware of that. And finally, uh, the Sure Creek, uh, school RFP, those proposals were due today. We did receive six proposals from, uh, the development community for that site. Um, staff is gonna internally review those initially here and then begin laying out a, most likely a virtual review process for the CDA. Um, and then we'll just see where the time leads us by the time it gets to the council. But we do have six proposals that, that did come in that we're, we're gonna start taking a look at. Um, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Uh, Alder Cronin?
So I did get some feedback from some constituents that there was concern that some of the vehicles being used by the assessors weren't marked with the company logo. Do you know if all the vehicles being used are identified that way or are some private vehicles being used?
Uh, I was under, under the impression that they're all marked. That was my understanding. Um, you know, if there's a situation where they see something that is suspicious, you know, I think I, I heard rumblings of there is a red vehicle taking pictures. I believe the police were called in that situation, but there's ever any question of if it's suspicious, they can call the police. I mean, there's, there's no problem with them doing that. We prefer if they would do that, if they have doubts about, is it the assessor or someone doing something they shouldn't be doing? When in doubt, just call the police. But my understanding is they should all be marked, uh, vehicles.
Another question on that is, I know you said they're all external evaluations at this point. Will, will there be any internal evaluations for some homes or it's no?
Not for this one, no. But that's my understanding is no, it's all exterior.
Uh, other questions for Mr. Sayer? I have one, I guess. Um, so ju- just to clarify, um, why are we doing the reevaluation, uh, this year?
So we, we started the process about six months ago. Um, we are at about eighty-one percent of fair market value, which means we're well below threshold established by the state for our assessment. So we, we started the process before COVID nineteen, um, because we were so far behind. The governor has exempted assessors as an essential service. So from the state of homeowner, that they have been exempted from that. Uh, so by law, we're able to kind of continue that process. So the reason we're continuing to do it is if we were to stop it at this point, it would cost the city a significant amount of money to kind of go back and redo the work that we already did. And then we'd have to go back and restart the process in twenty twenty-one. Um, but the big reason why it's being done is we're so far behind. So if anyone looks at their tax bill and looks at the assessed value versus the fair market value, there's, what, you know, nineteen, twenty percent difference between the two. And that's the reason why the revali- revaluation has to occur. That's by state law.
And if we, for example, decided not to do it this year, there's a potential the state could make us do it or do it themselves.
If we get too far out of whack, at some point the state will come in and they will do it for us and then they'll charge us for doing it. So it's, it's basically if we don't do it, they'll, they'll, they'll get done one way or the other.
Yeah, I mean, my personal preference, just to say, is I, I wish we could have delayed this another year, but, uh, uh, with the tax assessments being, being exempted from essential, essential, uh, uh, or being designated as an essential, uh, business, there's, to me, that we, we, we just had to do it this year, which I'm a little frustrated about, but, I don't know. It's the way it goes. Um, other questions for Mr. Sayer? Seeing none. We'll move on to item eight, which is the engineer's report. Uh, Ms. Fisher.
Great, thank you. Um, and as the, as it warms up here, this report is getting longer and longer. So I apologize for that. I'm just trying to read updates for these projects. I mean, if you have questions on anything, just let me know. So for the well six pumping station construction, the well and pump equipment have been installed and interior mechanical piping is currently being installed. The interior is being prepared for painting the week of April twenty-seventh. So that would be this week. Um, electric and communication services are being installed. And as mentioned at the last meeting, due to continued COVID nineteen protocols, only one trade can work in the building at a time. So this is expected to push the substantial completion of June thirtieth and final complete, completion to August thirty-first. So this is expected to push the substantial completion of June thirtieth and final complete, completion to August thirty-first. For the Verona area high school construction traffic improvements, um, West Verona Avenue inside lanes are closed through the project area with concrete landscaping and electrical items being completed. The lane closures are planned to switch to outside lane closure middle of this week. Surface asphalt paving on both eastbound and westbound lanes is planned for the week of, um, May eleventh. Traffic will be shifted, so both lanes are on the same side of the road, so each of the, each side of the pavement can be placed. Once paving is complete, traffic will be placed back into the inside lanes. West End Circle traffic will remain in the current location with concrete median placement and lower lift asphalt paving planned. Asphalt paving is planned for the week of May fourth in traffic to be switched to stage two location after pavement. Road based placement has begun on Wildcat Way, curbing gutter placement is planned in the upcoming weeks. Um, work is beginning or planned to begin shortly on Nine Mound Road, north and south of West Verona Avenue, Legion Street at Nine Mound Road and Paoli Street at Nine Mound Road. Work will be taking place in the next month or so and will consist of new, new turn lanes or median islands. For the county highway PD construction from Woods Road to County Highway M, private utility installation is scheduled to finish by the end of April. Roadwork has resumed with the placement of crushed aggregate base course on the future eastbound lanes, placement of the asphalt bike path and placement of stage three concrete curb and gutter. During the latter half of April, the contractor is scheduled to finish stage three concrete items, topsoil seeding and placement of concrete aggregate base course. During the first half of May, the contractor is scheduled to pave the binder lift of the future eastbound lanes and install the temporary traffic control items and the temporary paint. Traffic is scheduled to be shifted onto the new eastbound lanes in mid-May. For the Liberty Park Phase Four Construction, the storm sewer work on Liberty Drive and Ambition Street has been completed. The contractor has shifted the street grading on the Liberty Drive Extension and Ambition Street. Work on Whalen Road will follow after the work on Liberty Drive. Construction barrels have been placed on Whalen Road in anticipation of the work scheduled for Whalen. Um, I wanted to note for the upcoming rapid rectangular flashing beacon project and the twenty twenty asphalt rehabilitation project, both of those, um, are still scheduled to start in June. Um, however, uh, because schools are closed, both projects may be accelerated. And Northern Lights Road is currently closed just south of Nine Mound Road for utility work, is anticipated that the road will be reopened by May first. Um, and then Kittle Creek North Phase Three, a pre-construction meeting was held on April twenty-third for the third phase of Kittle Creek North. Construction, construction is slated to start the week of May fourth. And in terms of major design projects, the east side interceptor design continues to move forward. The design study report is finalized. Um, plan and profile sheets of the proposed interceptor have been reviewed by city staff. Easement documents are being drafted to allow staff to engage in the acquisition process. Permits have been submitted to the DNR and comments are being addressed by the consultant. Coordination will begin in May with properties along the corridor. And finally, for the Lincoln Street Stormwater Facility Design, the consultant is coordinating with the permitting agencies on revised layouts and will begin to formalize the permit applications. The agencies have provided positive feedback on the layout and operations and next steps are to begin detailed design and permit applications. So with that, I can take any questions.
Uh, any questions, uh, from Ms. Fisher? Seeing none. Uh, thank you, and we will move on to, uh, item nine, which is committee reports. Uh, first up, we have, uh, nine A, which is, uh, discussion and possible action regarding a public hearing on the petition slash resolution number R dash two zero dash zero one two to vacate and discontinue portions of Northern Light Road and Cross Country Road. Uh, Mr. Sayer, should we, uh, open a public hearing on this?
Yes, there needs a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second? Second by Alder Cole, all those in favor of opening the public hearing, say aye.
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 Oppose no? The public hearing is open at seven fifty-two PM, uh, Mr. Sayer, were there any, uh, public comments?
No, there were not any public comments, there wasn't anyone registered to speak tonight either on this item. So, um, I would consider that we've received no comments written, we've also received no request to, for anyone to speak.
Okay, a motion to, uh, close the public hearing would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
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 Oppose no? And the public hearing is closed at, uh, seven fifty-three PM. Mr. Sayer, do you have an overview for us?
Sure, so, uh, in your packet, there was a brief summary also on this item. The public hearing is required by state statute when a road is being discontinued. So the request tonight is to discontinue portions of, uh, Northern Lights Road and Cross Country Road. This item and the next two after this all relate back to the Epic replat. If you recall, that was a new plat for the Epic property that was, uh, was done about a month ago, it cleaned up some lot lines, uh, for, for, for the, the Epic campus. Uh, as part of that, we, we, we need to clean up some right-of-way lines, uh, and that relates to discontinuance. So when you're discontinuing a road, it basically means you're, you're stopped, you're gonna stop using the right-of-way. So the request is to kind of discontinue some very small portions of Northern Lights and, and Cross Country Road. We had the forty day notice as required by statute, we had the public hearing tonight and staff recommends approval of resolution twenty dash twelve discontinuing portions of those roads. And I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council.
Any questions for, uh, Mr. Sayer? Seeing none, I guess then we'll move on to nine A two, which is discussion and possible action regarding resolution number R dash two zero dash zero one two, discontinuing portions of Northern Light Road and Cross Country Road pursuant to Wisconsin Statute sixty-six dot one zero zero three. Uh, questions, comments, uh, motions? Uh, Alder Cole?
Um, I'm making a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero one two, discontinuing portions of Northern Lights Road and Cross Country Road pursuant to Wisconsin Statute sixty-six dot one zero.
Uh, motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Alder Cronin, I think. Um, anything to add, uh, Alder Cole?
Um, I could read the description, but Mr. Sayer kind of already went over it, so I don't know if you really want me to go for the same thing again.
I, I think we're good. Um, I have Clerk Clark with her hand raised.
Will we be doing this as a, as a roll call vote?
Um, yeah, I was gonna, uh, aim to do, uh, these resolutions as a roll call vote, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be controversial, but just, just, you know, just in case.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, motion before the body, uh, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, uh, we'll have the clerk read the roll.
Alder Cronin? Aye. Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey? Alder Posey?
Aye.
Okay.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Uh, and that motion passes. Um, next, oh, we'll move on to nine A three, uh, Alder Cole, did you, uh, should I kick this one over to you?
Um, I'm making a motion to approve a quit claim between the city of Verona and Epic Systems Corporation.
Uh, motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, uh, Alder Cole?
Um, the quit claim deed will transfer land between the city of Verona and Epic System Corporation related to a former transportation project plat. The quit claim will clean up any property line discrepancies prior to Epic Systems Corporation recording the new plat for their property. Once the new plat is recorded, the right-of-way on the plat will match what has been built.
Thank you for that explanation, uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Uh, seeing no further discussions, if the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Uh, next we will move on to, uh, nine A four, um, Alder Cole?
Right, I am making a motion to approve resolution number R dash twenty dash zero one six, approving a lease agreement between the city of Verona and Epic Systems Corporation.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, I think, uh, Alder Cole?
The proposed lease between the city of Verona and Epic Systems Corporation relates to the existing parking ramp tunnels on Northern Lights Road. The proposed lease establishes the terms, conditions and expectations for the use and maintenance of these areas that are located within road right-of-way. Staff recommends approval of the lease agreement, subject to final review by the city administrator and city attorney.
And that was, uh, the final review was part of the motion?
Yes.
Excellent. Uh, motion before the body, uh, questions, comments, um, the motion? Uh, seeing no further, seeing no further discussion, uh, the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Uh, and that motion passes. Uh, anything further from Plan Commission, Alder Cole?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and so, sorry if I didn't toss it over to you for the first item. With that, we'll move on to item ten, uh, new business, uh, first up, we have ten A, discussion and possible action regarding the payment of the bills, uh, Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, uh, for the payment of the bills in the amount of six hundred ninety-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion by Alder Cole, or motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, uh, Alder Kemp?
Thank, again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, nothing, uh, too big here this week. Um, there was a payment to the Madison Met Sewers District in the amount of three hundred and sixteen thousand, nine dollars and eighteen cents. There was also a twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollar and fifty cents payment to pre-se construction for sidewalk repair.
Thank you for that explanation, uh, questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, uh, if the clerk would read the roll?
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Uh, next we will move on to, uh, ten B, which is a discussion and possible action regarding the Small Business COVID nineteen Support Program. Uh, Mr. Sayer, can you give us, uh, an overview?
Yes, um, so this is a program that I know Mayor Diaz and I have talked about on numerous occasions, trying to look at what ways the city could help support small businesses. And this kind of started with the, kind of the chamber had expressed some concerns about local businesses in the community, kind of reached out to the city and just said, is there anything the city could possibly do to help with this? So the program was put together using, uh, two hundred thousand dollars of our revolving loan fund. That fund currently has more than six hundred thousand dollars in it, we have two active loans, one is the VACT, uh, the other loan is to the Treehouse, but we currently have more than six hundred thousand dollars kind of sitting in there. So the thought being is looking at, at two hundred thousand dollars of, of that, of that, uh, fund, setting it aside for the Small Business COVID Support Program, which we then could provide grants to small businesses in the city of a thousand dollars up to five thousand dollars. And the goal of this is to try to help small businesses, local businesses in the, in the city, to kind of bridge this gap of where we have this, uh, the closures that we have now, up into the point when we start to reopen at more of a rapid pace. And the, the thought being just, like I said, to bridge the gap when we have these closures and, uh, there's, there's no money coming in for these businesses. So, uh, as we looked at it, um, and hopefully you can see that screen. The, we, we, we laid out eligibility, we also laid out potential, uh, ways the money could be spent. The eligibility would, the business has experience of substantial financial impact, uh, it's a broad statement, but in essence, they've been impacted by COVID nineteen. Uh, this is for existing for-profit businesses with a brick and mortar presence in the community, so they'd have to have a storefront. So if it was a home occupation, uh, that would not apply, but if they have a storefront presence in the city, uh, that would be applicable to them. They have to employ twenty-five or fewer full-time employees, uh, that be established for at least six months, uh, be in existence for six months, uh, have managed a profitable business in twenty nineteen. Uh, they have no access to a franchisees, franchiser financial support system, so if it's part of a franchise, they have no access to, to any types of, of those programs. Uh, the business is not delinquent in property taxes, fees, et cetera, so if they owe money to the city already, uh, they would not qualify for, for this program. They have to have less than one million dollars in revenue in twenty nineteen, that was the kind of the cutoff criteria we use to try to, once again, cater towards that, that small business. And then finally, they have to demonstrate a twenty-five percent reduction in revenues attributable to COVID nineteen. So mo- most of these businesses have been closed, so that usually meets that requirement. Uh, eligible expenses, uh, potentially would include, uh, expenses that occurred after March first, twenty twenty or la- later. That include payroll, so for their employees or themselves. Utility payments that kind of keep making sure the building keeps the heat on, keeps the lights on. And then finally, any lease and mortgage payments, once again, the goal here is, the, the goal is try to bridge that gap to keep the business in place. Ineligible expenses we had were construction-related capital improvements, uh, making sure they're not building out spaces during this time. Uh, signage or advertising, past due leases, loans, utility payments, if they already owed money on it, the money couldn't be used for that. Potential uniforms, uh, and other, other items that were of sufficient stock prior to the governor's safer-at-home order. So if they had a large inventory of, of supplies or equipment, uh, that as of right now would not be eligible. So these are the items and the criteria that we, we listed, uh, the chamber did send this out for us on Friday morning. I believe they sent it out and we did receive, uh, some comments, we actually have already received, uh, four applications for this already too. Uh, but we did receive some comments from the chamber, and I think it's, I think it's good to share those with the council because we have the opportunity right now, if we choose to do so, you could, you could take those comments and actually put them into place, into, into the program. I think in general, what we received was a lot of appreciation for the city to even be considering this. Uh, we do have a lot of small businesses in the community who are suffering right now. So generally, even from people who knowingly in their emails said we don't qualify, uh, they're happy this conversation was occurring. There was concerns about, um, having a profitable business in twenty nineteen, and the specific one that was raised to, to me was, we had, one of the businesses that was looking at the program, uh, relocated from a existing location in Verona to a new location in Verona in twenty nineteen. As part of that relocation, they had some significant expenses which caused them not to be profitable in twenty nineteen. Uh, they were profitable the years before that, but because of the relocation, they did not have a profit in twenty nineteen. So because of that one criteria that they have to be profitable, uh, that, this one business would not qualify. And she, uh, the request was to raise that to the council and potentially look at, uh, amending this program to kind of fit that situation. There was also concern raised today from a, a new business in town that has, uh, been in town and been in existence less than six months. The concern was just, they, they didn't meet that criteria, but right now they're, they're fully closed, they can't have any customers come into their, their building. So they were concerned that, uh, because of that one criteria, they would not qualify for the program, even though they have the storefront presence. This criteria would not have a qualify, so, uh, that was an additional concern that was raised. And finally, I've had a couple of comments on trying to use funds from the program to pay for, uh, credit card payments for expenses incurred pre-COVID, so there were some people that had made some purchases. None of us saw the situation kind of coming, they have these expenses on their credit cards, they owe on those. Um, but by the current wording in the, or the, the program, um, those previous expenses would not be allowed to be kind of as a, uh, for. um, those previous expenses would not be allowed to be kind of as a, uh, for, couldn't go towards, funds for the program couldn't go towards those expenses. Um, and they asked to have that expand that eligible list of expenses for credit cards to be included. Um, also, they asked for essential supplies for the businesses. I know I forwarded off an email today from the council from a local business, but just that there's essential supplies that they need in order to stay functioning. There was a request as well as, as, as part of that. So looking to kind of broaden the, the general, uh, statement of that. And then finally, the last kind of comments I just had were, I had a few comments from people. You said, the program does limit certain businesses, certain types of businesses. I think the comment was your typical like dentist, orthodontist, um, eye doctor potentially, just because of kind of how they operate, they wouldn't qualify for this. And the, the comments I heard on that, they weren't necessarily raising that as a, as a, as an issue. I think they're just pointing out that obviously this, this didn't cover all businesses in town. And I, quite honestly, when this was put together, the intent was to focus more on those smaller type businesses and that's, that's why they weren't covered. Uh, so those are the, kind of the comments that, you know, I, I've received on this. Um, I, I think the council, there's a, a variety of things that you could do tonight on this. Obviously, you could just say, no, we're not doing this, um, which is definitely within the, the rights of the council. Um, once you spend this money, once this money's gone out of that revolving loan fund, it's most likely gone. It's going to be tough to put that money back in. Um, so that's just one thing to remind the council of. Um, you can make changes to this program tonight, kind of on the fly if you choose to do so. Um, the deadline for applications is May fifth. The intent is staff would process these. Uh, if a business meets the criteria, uh, we would cut the check shortly after May fifth, try to get the money out as fast as we can. I know one of the comments from Mayor Diaz at one point was, why don't you do a loan program instead? Um, one of the disadvantages of doing a loan program is time. Takes a little bit longer to get through that process. If we're borrowing money, we have to check with sometimes with the other lenders. We have to check with the bank. We have to check with whoever else they have, and then we have to process paperwork. I know Luke's counter back to me was, uh, well, can't you just forgive the loan, which we could do. A lot of places are doing that right now too. But I've heard the comment from a few businesses in town of, you know, when they take out a loan, they expect to repay it and they would feel, they don't want any more, some businesses don't want or can't take on any more debt, even if their commitment is out there of, it's going to be forgiven. Um, I think our thought on the grant program was this is the quickest way we can possibly get money out to the small businesses that need support right now. Um, and that's kind of how we, we fell on this program. So the, the bottom line is, like I said, tonight, you could approve it as drafted right now. Uh, you have every right to kind of start making changes to the program of the criteria, just based upon the comments we've gotten from businesses. Um, any of those changes will be applicable. We can make those changes. And once we start officially taking applications tomorrow, uh, businesses would be aware of what those are. But you kind of have the full gamut tonight of, of, of what you would choose to do. So I guess, do you have any questions on the presentation or any of the details? And then I'll let you guys start talking about what you need to do.
Uh, before I open it up, open it up to the council, just a question on process. So this is under two items, B and C. So would you be looking then for two, two motions, one for the program and then one for the ordinance change?
Sure, the, yeah, the, the ordinance change, that is, that is a clarification if you decide to move with, forward with the program. And what we wanted to do was make it abundantly clear in the ordinance that the council has the ability to, to potentially act on that program. So what that ordinance change says is the county council may approve grants and appropriate funds from revolving loan fund for purposes of the city of Verona Small Business COVID-nineteen Support Program without a recommendation of the V E D C, which is the Verona Economic Development Commission. So we want to make it abundantly clear that the, the authority to do this is being done by the council, but we also wanted to make the guidelines for that, uh, very tight. So we're doing it just for this program. So it, it wouldn't be, i- i- if a future council or this council wanted to kind of go back into this fund and spend money, you'd have to go back and amend the ordinance again. So we just, we didn't want to open the door completely to the council to spend that, use money as you choose. We wanted to make sure it was abundantly clear. We're going to do it for this program. We could, we could also broaden that language ju- too, if you chose to, but, uh, we thought it was appropriate just to make that for this. So it would be two separate motions. You have a, a motion potentially on the program. And if that passes, you'd have a second motion on the ordinance. If that first motion on the program does not pass, you can forget the second item on the agenda for the ordinance amendment.
Excellent. Um, with that, uh, questions, comments, uh, from Mr. Sarah, or I would take motions. Uh, Alder Cole and then Alder Kemp and then Alder Posey.
Um, I just want to say that I'm definitely in favor of this. Thank you guys for drafting something like this. Um, I know you said, once the money is gone, it's gone, but I think that this is a good investment. These small businesses have invested in our community. And I think it's our duty to invest back in them and help them stay afloat during this very bizarre time in the world. Um, that being said, I would be open to amending it to, um, like, you know, the one business that the, you know, they didn't turn a profit last year because of specific circumstances and moving. We all know, you know, overhead costs like that can cause issues. They didn't, weren't expecting this to happen. So, I mean, amending things like that, or, you know, like for the credit card payments, they bought a bunch of stuff for their job, not knowing, or for their, for their business, not knowing this was coming. I'd be okay with amending it to include things like that as well.
Uh, Alder Kemp and then Alder Posey.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, first I wanted to, again, um, let the, let the business community know that we're behind them. This is a difficult time. Um, the businesses here in Verona, um, do a lot for the community. And so I think it's important that we as a city, uh, when times like this strike us, that we do what we can to support them. Um, I did have an opportunity to kind of look at some of this before it was presented. And I think that, uh, that Adam has done a good job in putting it together. I think it's a good idea. Um, I do want to be sure that, uh, with the parameters that we have, that we're being responsible with, with the money. So I think it was important to really narrowly tailor this. Um, it's not an effort to kind of weed some businesses out, but just to make sure that we're responsible. I mean, I think all of us have seen some of the things that have been happening on the national level. We don't want that to happen here either. So citizens can know that we've been doing our due diligence and making sure that we've been fiscally responsible. Um, as far as expanding it, I think that we, you know, given the fact that, I agree with Alder Cole, given the fact that the one business was in Verona years before, has had profitable businesses, uh, profitable years in the past, and then they moved. I think that that's one that we could certainly make an exception for. Um, the credit card issue, um, I think that, you know, again, in doing our due diligence, we would want to just make sure that these are items that, that are exclusively for the business, right? I mean, I owned a small business, uh, before I merged my practice. Um, you just want to make sure that all of those payments are for that business specifically. Um, and I think there was one other issue that I'm drawing a blank on right now. Uh, was, there was someone who was, who's been here for less than six, or less than a year, correct?
Yeah.
Um, I think if, I think if, now, the problem, the only problem that I see with that is if you open it up to one, then you likely open it up to everyone. Am I, I mean, w- what's to stop it then from being any business in, that's in the city of Verona, regardless of the length of time? Um, I, I don't want to, you know what I mean? Like, I don't want to be cold-hearted about it. I, I'm, I first want to focus on the businesses that have been here for a longer period of time. Um, and see where we can go from there, because at that point, then it's really, anyone could apply. Maybe that's appropriate. I, I don't know for sure. So I kind of want to just get a feel for what everyone else thinks, if the time limit is appropriate or not.
Uh, Alder Posey.
Okay. Um, so I'll get to that question in a second. Uh, do we have any idea what percentage of Verona businesses currently meet the criteria from the chamber?
Uh, Mr. Sarah?
No, we don't, we don't have a good number on it. I, the number I got initially from them was around three hundred, but then as I got into the spreadsheet, uh, a lot of the employers didn't, hadn't filled out some of the employment data. Um, so no, I, and part of it too is that revenue criteria the chamber is not going to have. Um, so even if they have less than twenty-five employees, but they have more than a million dollars in revenue, you know, we're, they're not, the chamber is not going to have that. So I, my, my guess is we, we did send this off to our, uh, our, uh, Baker Tilly, who does our, your financial audits. And the comment they came back with was they said, there was a community, they, community that they knew of that did a similar program and gave out about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in grants. And they, that's what they told us to probably anticipate. So, uh, that's kind of what number we're guessing at, but we could be completely wrong one way or the other. So no, we don't have a good number on it.
Okay. I, I should also say that I think that this is fantastic. This was an idea even, I was bouncing it around, trying to think of something since we had been talking about this pool of money and finance recently. And so it was really terrific to see this show up and all the legwork you guys have already done on it. Um, the other kind of question I had was, well, this one's more feedback. So going under ineligible expenses, just that past due leases, loan or utility payments, being specific about the date, since we have the date above with the March one, because by now somebody could be past due on a utility payment. And so making sure that we're being specific that it's whatever was incurred past due prior to March one, if that's the date everybody wants to go with. And then I was also thinking a helpful question for evaluation of the grants would be if, um, businesses have received PPP funds or other federal funds already, because that could help identify the greatest need. Because as things are constantly flowing right now, um, and related to that was a question around if there would be a deadline. I know some businesses and programs have put in, you know, December thirty-first, and we could even extend it if that's necessary. Or if there would be a deadline on this, or if we would just keep it as sort of open-ended.
Uh, Mr. Sarah, do, do we have a deadline, uh, in this? It's a good point.
Sorry, I was taking some notes. Um, so we have a, applications are due May fifth at four P M. So the thought being is we'd keep the, the timeline pretty tight here. And then we potentially could have the ability to possibly open a backup or potentially change the criteria if you chose to do so. Um, if there was funds left over, or you could do a lot of things with it, but May, May fifth is the, the deadline we've established.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I, I would be concerned with it being so early on that if this continues, what we, so as long as we could be, have that play in there that we have the ability to come back to us as a council and approve an extension of that deadline, I would be completely for that. Um, I would also be open to kind of, I guess, opening up some of the criteria as far as, you know, the six months. Just because I think, you know, there are businesses that made moves without being able, and by moves, financial, physical, without being able to anticipate this is coming. And I want to make sure that they feel like they're a part of our community and supported as well. Um, but every, yeah, thank you very much for taking the initiative on this.
Um, Alder Cronin and then, um, myself and then Alder Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I would just echo what we've been hearing. Um, we have been talking about this, uh, revol- revolving loan fund and finance and what would be the best way to use this. I understand that, that these, um, money would be given as grants. Um, but in terms of the requirement for being in Verona for more than six months, I, if you're in Verona, you're in Verona and you're in Verona for a reason. So I would be in support of being able to give these grants to any business that makes the application that is physically located in Verona. Um, I mean, this is such a challenging time and especially for very small businesses, you know, they run on razor-thin margins. And, um, being able to especially support any of their employees, I think is a, is a fantastic use of this money. And that's, you know, it's not doing us any good for it to just sit in the city of Verona coffers, uh, when we could be supporting businesses.
Uh, myself and then Alder Ricky. Yeah, I just wanted to say, yeah, and, uh, uh, I like the idea of a loan program just because the money would come back, even if it's your interest. However, I understand why businesses at this time would be a little hesitant about taking on further obligations, since I don't think anyone knows what's going to happen in the next few months. So I totally get that. Uh, my bottom line is, you know, both federal, state and local level, like ultimately what people need are cash, whether they're businesses or individuals, like, you know, don't, you know, like, send money. I had a chance to speak with someone from the Department of Administration with the state, and I basically made the same argument that, you know, like, you know, they were asking, how, how can we help? How can we help? It's like, send, send, send people money. And, and I want to kind of like, practice what I preach. Um, and this is a chance for us to hopefully move the needle a little bit. Um, you know, as far as the requirements go, I think, you know, some of the stuff that Alder Kemp suggested and other, other people have suggested, it's kind of, you know, we want to prevent a situation where like, you know, God bless McDonald's, but like, they don't need help. Like McDonald's, McDonald's is going to come out of this just fine. Um, so we, we just wouldn't want a situation where a big national chain, which is going to do very well regardless, you know, gets a thousand dollars. I, I, on some level, I don't think they would bother applying at all. But that's, that's kind of where it is. I mean, the only requirement that I really feel attached with is, is, uh, number five, which is the business is not delinquent as it relates to city of Verona property taxes, personal property taxes, fees, special assessments, et cetera. We basically want people, make sure people at least have demonstrated some ability to keep up to their obligations. But, you know, I, I, I'd be open to what other people, uh, think as well. Um, Alder Ricky.
Thanks. I am very much in support of a program like this and I'm okay with, um, removing a couple of the stipulations that have pre- previously been spoken about, like the six-month timeline. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering, would it be possible to, um, see how many applicants there are after, upon that May fifth date? And then, um, open up the criteria more possibly after that, if there are still funds left?
Um, absolutely. It would, it would be at the discretion of the council. So, yeah, if, if, if we did, uh, uh, had this, you know, a bunch of businesses say, we really could use this, but we can't apply. We could just bring it right back at the next, the next council meeting and make a decision to expand it. Uh, anything further, Alder Ricky?
Uh, yeah, I would be more in favor of that at this time then, just because I'm thinking if we get, you know, forty applicants that all, or more than forty applicants that all want the five thousand as opposed to the one thousand, and then, um, we would have to narrow down the amount being given. Um, and that might, the five thousand might have made or, made or broken their ability to survive after this. Um, I just don't want to limit the opportunities for individual small businesses to make it through this. Um, so I'm in support of maybe making some minor adjustments to the way it's written now. Um, but then, um, possibly making further adjustments after May fifth.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I mean, of course, we want to help the businesses. I, I, I keep thinking about, you know, the feds, how they ran out of funds and either how do we avoid that? And, you know, listening to everyone's comments, and Heather, I think you brought up a great point about, you know, really just making sure we can help as many as possible. I do feel, I, I would be really interested, interested in seeing the volume of applicants we get with the current criteria. And then if there's funds available, expand the criteria, open up more. Whether it's the credit cards, you know, we, we've got a business that just came to Verona that has some debt from that. I think, I think we just need to make sure we have funds. And it's really tragic when, you know, these opportunities come up and then the money's gone. And I think if we open it up too much, we're going to burn through our funds quicker than we want. And then people are going to be left out just because they relate to the game. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say is whether it's loans or grants, I obviously like the idea of a loan, because the money comes back to your interest. But there's definitely a, a hassle factor, there's a time factor to that. I'm also in favor of grants. I think, I think it would be worth looking at each applicant, recognizing the value it provides to the community. And I know, of course, it's very subjective and difficult to truly measure, but, you know, you really want to put the money where it's going to get the most bang. Hey, we give this company five grand, ten grand, whatever that number is, are they going to make it? Versus if you give some money to a co- a second company, but they're really on the edge and they're really, you know, the risk is much greater. I want to give it to one that, you know, we, we feel confident is going to stay. I, I wish I knew how to answer that. I don't. It's just, I think we all want that. But, um, I just want us to be careful not just spreading it all too thin and helping nobody. So that's all I have.
Uh, Alder Kemp.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have to agree with Evan's sentiment there. Um, my initial thought when I, you know, was looking at this was trying to make sure we have enough runway, because none of us right now from where we sit have an understanding or even a remote idea of how long this could go on. And so my my concern would be. In trying to be there for some of the small businesses, if if we go too far, too fast. That we would in fact do exactly what the the federal government has just done. So, you know, while I'm in favor of the program, I do want to see. You know, I'd like to see how many people apply or how many businesses apply. With the current standard. And what amounts they apply for, so we can just get an idea of numbers. And then take a take a look at what we get from that. And then decide, you know, do we want to open it up more? Is it possible to look at opening up the amounts to a higher level? The other issue, as I see it is, or the one question I have is, who would be doing the review of the applications themselves? I don't think we've discussed that. I may have missed it, but I think we should all know who would be reviewing them and approving them.
It depends on what criteria the council comes up with, but staff would review it if it's. Relatively straightforward criteria at the moment. So I feel like staff would just handle that and then thumbs up, thumbs down and. You know, if if they denied a bunch of people, it would probably come back to the council saying, you had to deny these. You know, do you want us to keep denying them or do you want to change the standards?
Just in general, if we were going to be doing loans, I would be much more in favor of having it more open because we would know we would get it. We would be getting it back even at zero percent. I'm just saying with with it being a grant, which is completely fine also. I think we need to get an idea of what businesses are going to apply. And see what amounts they apply for and then kind of go from there.
Alder Cronin and then Alder Journey.
So this is more of a question, but. Businesses could apply for whatever amount they choose to apply for, but that we're not guaranteeing that they're going to get that amount. I mean, could we see what kind of volume of applications that we get and make some decisions about. Whether we might need to reduce the amount to make it more equitable so we can support. A greater number of businesses. Is that possible with this? Ordinance?
Mr. Sayre. So we we have in there, the range of the grants will be from one thousand to five thousand. It will depend on the number of applicants. So our our thought being is if they meet the criteria and they they kind of. You know, based upon the request, if there's enough money there, they'll probably get pretty much what they're asking for. The ones I've seen so far. When we have four of them, three out of four have asked for five thousand dollars. So it's to the max already. The one, one of them was not the max yet, but. So if we if we do get requests more than two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to look at the whole. And try to start paring those down based upon just averaging them out. So we're not going to go out and kind of pick and choose who we think is more deserving. That's that's the challenge with this is. If they meet the criteria and we have the funds, they're going to get the award. You know, I think it's the point of, I think what Evan was kind of getting to of. We're not going to have that ability that you normally would have as part of a loan process to really dive into these. And look at the books, if you want to say, and we're going to be taking their word on kind of they need it and they're deserving of it. If they ask for five thousand and five thousand is there. They meet the criteria, they're probably going to get five thousand dollars just because they're meeting the criteria of the program. So that that is one of the downfalls of the grant program is that. Will some people potentially ask for more than what they need? Yes, and it's unfortunate because it could impact people that actually truly need it potentially. So it does open that. There is some risk on that.
Alder Journey, then Alder Kemp, then Alder Posey.
I think you're muted.
Okay, so I I too was happy to see this initiative come out. And I guess a clarification for me because I would, I would consider. You know, including business, young businesses that might need the grant. But kind of a follow up from Alder Kemp and Alder Touche. So would would we, would the grants or the requests come in? But what would be the sense of urgency in doing the payout? That is, would would. The grant be evaluated and then a decision made of the whole of the requests? And would the council have an opportunity to have some input at that time?
Mr. Sayre.
If you want opportunity, you could have that in here. Yeah, I mean, that's that's potential. The only thing, like I said, I'll caution on is if they meet the criteria. You can't, you can't pick and choose who you like better for whatever reason. I mean, if you want someone. Because you like them better or a certain type of business, you should build that into the criteria. So if you want to support, you know. Restaurants or take your pick of whoever it might be, you'd want to factor that in this part of the criteria. So you're upfront and and fair. Because the last thing you want to do is when you get to the council meeting, if you're looking at these as a whole, you don't want to start being arbitrary and kind of picking and choosing. Based upon just who you like. So you you could build that into the program if you choose to. Yeah, we could, we could try to get something in there.
I was just kind of basing it upon, you know, the the types of businesses, the ones that. You know, the larger businesses, the established businesses, but then the smaller businesses and not that we would be doing. You know, do we like it or not, but to, you know, provide an advantage for everybody if that was a possibility.
Anything further, Alder Journey?
No.
Okay, I got Alder Kemp, then Alder Posey, then Alder Ricky, and then Alder Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thought, one thing that just popped in my head. We have this zero to one million dollar revenue window that we're working with. And I do think that, you know, these businesses do need help. Would it be possible to do? Within that range at a certain level, say at level X in revenue, you're eligible for a grant. And if you are over that amount in revenue, you could apply for a loan at zero percent. I'm not sure if that's something that we've even thought of, but it could be a hybrid. I understand that the loan is again more paperwork. The idea being, say, for example, a business that. Earned over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars last year versus a business that made two hundred thousand and has three or four employees. Could get access to that cash sooner. Perhaps the business that earned more may not necessarily need that access right away. We could hold back some of the money for the businesses that need that help, you know, earlier. I don't know. If that's a possibility or not, but it's just something I thought of.
I mean, it is at the discretion of the council, but you know, it's something we could work on as the program goes on. Alder Posey.
Quick on what Alder Kemp was just saying. So what I would get from that would be that we'd have. Two different programs if we did it that way. Because one would be a loan program for X amount of revenue to the other and the other is the grant program. So it'd end up same pot, but just two different. Programs. My other question is, I guess, that's more common, I guess, than question, but. You know, that grant process of actually applying for the grant, there is a certain level of, I guess, if when you call it a grant, expected. That you may not get everything because it is being given to you. So I guess my past history with grants is I've put in for a lot and sometimes I've got nothing. Now that's not what we're doing here. But it is something where we may have to evaluate, well, we've got this many and we need to look at things or. So I would hope that we can figure a way to. Write this and unfortunately kind of very quickly in this, it's hard to rewrite it. Or add things or take things away very quickly to make sure that we can have that kind of. I don't like using, you know, it is a process for the grant and finding where the greatest need is, is the term I want to use. But I do think that that adding in there, if they have gotten those other funds or are applying and working with a. Bank in order to get the other funds or credit union, just so that we know where they are in the process. And how critical their need is so that if they need that grant right now because they're not getting what they need and they're about to be, you know. Without a place to have their business, let's get them what they need while we're working on everything else. But I think it's really important to know. I I would really think that that's an important question to have in there is what other support they're either applying for or getting already or in the process for. Thank you.
I have Alder Ricky and Alder Touche.
I forgot what I was going to say because of. Just the the comments that have been said since I raised my hand. I still think that we should leave, leave it as is for now because May fifth is a week away. And so people don't have much time to get their applications in and we might get more than forty, asking for five thousand dollars. And then, then I think the idea would be that we just give them, you know, that much less. As opposed to having to go back to the drawing board and open it up to more people who would then. Necessitate everybody getting less than what they originally asked for, which may make or break their business. So. I just, I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be. And if if a week from now we find, oh, we've only gotten twenty applicants. Then we can move forward from there with adding or take it away stipulations, I guess it would be.
Alder Touche.
Thank you. Alder Ricky, I can agree with the challenge of remembering your questions after so many people speaking. But I have two points. One, Journey, Alder Journey. You got me thinking about businesses and businesses that applying. You know, I think. Is there, I'm just thinking out loud, asking the council, is there a type of business, you know? Let's say adult business or. Tattoo parlors, I don't know, that we may not want to support and is that worth discussing here? And then I really liked what Alder Posey kind of said, as far as we don't have to give them the full grant amount. I think we evaluate the need or we let the city evaluate the the need. You know, someone asks for five and we really question, well, do you really need all five? I I think Alder Posey is right. You know, maybe we give them three or whatever number we feel is appropriate or the committee feels is appropriate. So. You know, I want to leave the my open question to the council to discuss any ideas. I I. Don't know any off the top of my head that we might not want to contribute funds to, but you know, in the end. My preferences would be a Verona owned business, employing Verona residents. I really want to keep the money. The city's money in the city. For me, that those are like two high marks if we were to rank. You know, where money's going to go and why. That's a big part of it right there for me. Thank you. I know, finally, I'm comfortable leaving the criteria the way it is for now. There's money left over, we open it up. Thank you.
Before I entertain a motion or any other comments, I am going to use my privileges chair to do a brief recess for three minutes. Because I really have to use the restroom. And so that'll give time for people to think of a motion if they want to keep it as it is or whatever, but I will be back in three minutes. So and if you need to use the bathroom, that would be the time.
Can we do that?
I want to meet everybody.
Yes.
All right, Luke, I got everybody else muted. Should I unmute them? Give it a second. There's Heather.
All right, I think, I think everyone's back, so we will resume discussion of ten B, the Small Business COVID-19 Support Program. Questions, comments, or motions? Alder Ricky.
I'll make a motion to approve the Small Business COVID-19 Support Program as written.
Motion by Alder Ricky, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add, Alder Ricky, Mr. Sayer?
I know you guys had a bunch of potential changes to it, so I was taking notes as you went. I don't know if you want to, anyone wants to make any changes to. I know the motion wasn't that worded that way, so I am ready to talk about those if you want to make changes.
Motion by Alder Ricky, seconded by Alder Kemp. Anything to add on your motion, Alder Ricky?
Um, the only change that I think is feasible to fit in at this point is doing away with the stipulation of, I think it was written as being in Verona for six months or more. Is that correct? So I'd be willing to get rid of that one. And then it looks like you also crossed out the managed profitable, profitable business operation in 2019. That one I would be okay with deleting as well.
I was just taking notes as the comments came up and then we had one about ineligible expenses of trying to tie that back to a date to be consistent with the item above. Or we had a March 1st, 2020 date, so we could add a note in there, maybe not where I put it, but someplace else tying it to that date. And then the other note that I had was trying to get a question about what other financial support have you applied for? Or in the process of receiving something similar to that as part of the question? To kind of get to if we have to start looking at other criteria, be able to use that in the future. So those are the notes I took.
Is it necessary for me to amend my motion at this point?
No, that's a, a motion, there's a motion before the body, so if people wanted to make motions to amend it, they could. So we can open it up to the, to discussion if that works. Alder Ricky?
That is great.
Great. I had Alder Cronin? And then I'm not sure who else.
Um, I would be interested in amending the motion to also remove the established business by or before September 2019. I would also like to see the the dates match, the March 1st date for past due utility payments. And what was the last one? Yeah, including that question about whether they're applying for any other assistance.
Alder Ricky.
I just want to make sure with adding that number five there that there's not going to be too much clerical and decision-making work necessary for the staff to do in order to, because we haven't talked about what the answers to that question might entail. And whether or not, I, I don't think that question needs to be added, I guess. Bottom line.
Mr. Sayer?
I think a lot of people have applied for it. That was the impression I got from the chamber. Some people don't know, they haven't gotten answers on the program. I think it depends on the question there by itself as kind of where I have it right now. It's more of just a information gathering type question. If you shifted that to a criteria, kind of in the first page here, if you move that to criteria, then it would create additional administrative kind of burden for us to try to weigh those. I mean, I guess it depends on what the council's feeling is if, is that a good thing or bad thing if they're potentially getting money from other sources? But I know a fair number have applied, you know, I think last I heard a fair number had not heard back if they're actually beginning any of that money.
Did you have a follow-up, Alder Ricky?
Yeah, I just don't think it should be included. I think it complicates things and I think it makes it less subjective.
Alder Posey? You appear to be muted. Maybe?
There.
Yes.
You hear me? Okay. So related to the six-month operations, I would, was thinking that might be best instead of just entirely eliminating that, saying in business at least by February 1st, 2020, so that we don't have anybody who may have decided to open something post or write that. So having that date instead of it being six months, but still doing that. And then however we feel about, you know, maybe instead of having that profitable question, having that profitable, having the profitability as a question in the application that, and if it isn't profitable, why? So having a question along the lines of, were you profitable in 2019? If not, why? So it simply keeps that sort of in there, but yet it becomes a question, not a criteria for application.
Alder Ricky? And then Alder Touche.
Yeah, I could agree with those, those changes that Alder Posey just mentioned.
Alder Touche.
Yeah, I, 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 I just want to go back to what I said before while we're still discussing it. I, I, I really don't want to go go too wide on opening the criteria right away. I would really like to see the, the number of applicants we get. If we get a small number, yeah, let's open it up. Let's get more applicants. We got money left over. What I really just would hate to get into is we open it really wide, we don't have enough money to meet everyone's need or request and then we end up either having to deny people or short everybody. It, it just makes, I think it makes it even harder. I think the original criteria is good criteria. Is it perfect? No. Does it account for all the kind of little situations that we like? Probably not. But I, I really do think that the original motion is a good motion, the original proposal, excuse me. And that after we get these results in, after we see how many applicants we get, no, it's looking pretty, you know, the pool's pretty thin. Yeah, let's open it up, add these other items. I think it's worth discussing. It also gives it time to bake a little bit. We see how things look, we see what's going on with our applicants, what the applications look like. We kind of get some experience with us before we open it up to even more businesses. So I'm not really a fan of adding more of these items. Questions, I think, are fine, but I really do think what Adam and the mayor put together is, is a good start. Thank you.
Well, there is a motion for the body, so if somebody wanted to change it, they should move to amend it. If nobody wants to change it, we can have the vote on it. So I will, I guess, or if anyone wants to speak, of course, they can do that as well. So questions, comments, Alder Kemp? Uh, you are muted. Let's see.
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Um, is the current motion the original language as it stands or as it was written? I, I would just say, I, at this point, I agree. I think we have, we need to get funds to the businesses. I think we should look at what comes in. We're going to get a, a look pretty quickly here because it's only a week away. And I think we can reassess after that pretty quickly as well. So I think we should go with what we've got right now, how it was drafted originally.
All right, Alder Posey. You're good.
Okay, so I guess as follow-up to that, can we, I don't know if this is appropriate at this moment or we need to talk about it in a minute, but what would our process be for coming back together? Because we're talking a week from now and we wouldn't be getting back together for a little while here. So what would, would we have a special meeting? How would that process work for us to be able to review this and keep things moving with this process in a timely manner?
Um, I guess we could either wait for the, the council meeting in May, which like you said, it would, it would be a week or two longer than maybe people would like, or we could call for a special meeting. I'm not, I don't have the ordinances in front of me, but I think it's something like a 48-hour notice is what would be required to do. So we could put time together, you know, relatively quick, not, you know, not quick for private business, but you know, quick, quick for government. Alder Touche.
I, 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 I like the idea of a potential for a special meeting. A lot of us are at home. I, I don't think many people are traveling very far. I think I'm sure there might be an exception here or there that I don't, can't think of right now, but I think we're generally available. So I'm open to a special meeting. I'm definitely trusting the city and the mayor to decide it's worth having a separate meeting or an additional meeting and going from there. So I'm, I'm certainly willing to be flexible to try to be as dynamic as a government body can be.
Clerk Clark.
Hi, so 24-hour notice.
24-hour, so even faster than I thought. So I guess Alder Journey. Okay.
Did I come through? I guess I didn't.
No, you're coming through now.
Okay, so we have a, a Board of Review meeting on May 11th. Would it be possible to schedule, you know, a meeting to follow up after the Board of Review meeting? To do our evaluation as to the applications?
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't that before the regular council meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, so I mean, we, like I said, if, if, if people wanted to wait two weeks, we could, we could wait two weeks. Or we could call a special meeting if we felt like there was a crisis.
Okay.
Alder Cronin.
Just FYI, we're all getting messages when we try to unmute ourselves that we're not allowed to because you have muted us.
Okay, that's on Mr. Sayer, so throw him under the bus.
Make a motion to amend Alder Ricky's motion, just to remove the six-month requirement from the eligibility.
Motion to amend by Alder Cronin, is there a second? Seconded by Alder Cole. Anything to add to the motion, Alder Cronin?
No.
Amendment before the body, discussion on the amendment. Seeing no further discussion, we will vote on the amendment, which would be to remove the six-month requirement. If Clerk Clark would read the roll?
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche? Alder Touche?
No.
No? Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Oh.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
No.
So we have three noes and four ayes.
Uh, so that motion passes, so we are back to the original, original motion with the requirement for six months for the business to be established, deleted. So that's not in there. Everything else is as in the packet. Discussion on the motion as amendment amended. Going once. Going twice. Seeing no further discussion, if the clerk would read the roll on the motion as amended.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
And that motion passes. Excellent. Next we'll move on to 10C, which is discussion on possible action regarding ordinance number 20-965, creating section 2-4-8G of the code of ordinances related to the City of Verona Small Business COVID-19 Support Program. Mr. Sayer?
Once again, this just explicitly allows the council to adopt and establish that COVID support program which you just voted on. Simple ordinance change that just gives you the authority to do what you just did.
So that, that, that is a good thing. Questions, comments, motions? Alder Touche.
How are we allowed to do this out of order?
Mr. Sayer?
How? Because you, you would, if this would have been first, you would have talked about the program first. Because the program is what you're talking about to do. So it is out of order, but your conversation then would have been out of order then.
Love government. I'm good. Thank you.
Alder Ricky?
Um, I just wanted to say please keep your notes, Adam, for future reference. Thank you.
Questions, comments, motions?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Posey, I think. Anything to add, Alder Touche?
Nothing.
Uh, motion before the body, questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of ordinance number 20-965, creating section 2-4-8, print G of the Code of Ordinances related to the City of Verona Small Business COVID-19 Support Program. Actually, sorry, we will read the roll on this. Clerk Clark?
Alder Cronin?
Aye.
Alder Journey?
Aye.
Alder Kemp?
Aye.
Alder Cole?
Aye.
Alder Posey?
Aye.
Alder Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Touche?
Aye.
And that motion, and that motion passes. With that, we'll move on to 10D, which is discussion on possible action regarding the 2020 fall elections. Is this Clerk Clark or Mr. Sayer?
I think this is an item, Luke, that you, Mayor Diaz requested to have on the agenda, so I'll, I'll defer to you, Mayor Diaz, on this one.
Yeah, sure. So this is something right now. As, as we've said a few times, we don't know how long this is going to last. It, uh, the, the, uh, April elections ended up coming off, I thought, really well, considering the circumstances and considering the, the stress city staff was under, um, which was a lot to their effort. I kind of wanted to get out in front of this a little bit. Um, I think, you know, I, there's not going to be a vaccine by November. There's not going to be a vaccine by August. Like, there's just no way. And I would love to be wrong, but I, I don't think I will be. And so what I was thinking is, is we could talk a little bit about ways to reduce, you know, crowding at the polls, to encourage absentee voting, to encourage vote by mail. Um, and just, just how we basically get it so people don't feel afraid to vote if this pandemic is still going on. And, 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 you know, we don't have people gathering in large crowds either. Some communities outside of Milwaukee, for this past election, they mailed an absentee registration, so not a ballot, but basically a, a form that said, you know, if you want to apply for a ballot, send this in the city hall and we'll send you a ballot. And, and two communities outside of Milwaukee did that. There's a few communities now that are looking to do that for the August slash November election. So I basically just wanted to, to open it up. Um, we're not going to, I don't think we're going to make a decision tonight on that. But just any ideas, whether people would be opposed, in favor? And just any ideas on how we can make voting as good and as safe as possible? Alder Touche?
Would Ellen or Adam describe the current process to get an absentee ballot? Because, and also I am interested in, Adam, I think last, or maybe it was you, Ellen, I apologize, last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, kind of shared the percentages of absentee versus in-person and how that compared to previous elections. Can you share both of those pieces of information, please?
Clerk Clark?
Sure. So can you hear me?
Yes.
So it was about eighty percent absentee at this last election. And, you know, that honestly, if, if people want to vote absentee, it's a little more expensive because we have to pay the postage and that sort of thing. And we're paying our, our election workers and our administrative workers. But if everyone votes absentee, then you just have to do it once, right? So there, there are sort of two ways to think about it. On the other hand, asking, sending out requests for absentee ballots to everyone who is registered is sort of a double-edged sword because so many people have moved, you know, even if they've moved from apartment 101 to apartment 101. You know, even if they've moved from apartment 101 to apartment 102, they have to re-register. And anything we send to them will come back to us. So I think versus sending out a paper request to everyone, it would be smarter for us to just ask everyone to please request an absentee ballot. And they can do that on my vote. And those who are not able to do that because they need to, because you do need to have proof of residence or what am I trying to say? If, if you vote, you have to have a, an ID.
Yeah.
You have to do that whether you come in person or whether you vote absentee. And some people are not able to do that. They, they're not able to scan their, their photo ID. So for those people, I'm thinking that maybe we can, I'm hoping that the elections commission honestly can come up with something for those people. Because otherwise they're going to be disenfranchised. Otherwise, I, I think, I don't think paper is the way to go. I think we just need to do a whole lot of work to encourage people to vote absentee and to, to do the west vote or the myvote.com. Because, because it's so easy. Except for, like I said, people who can't necessarily scan or don't know how to scan their ID and that kind of thing. Questions?
Let's see, I got Alder Touche, then Alder Cronin, then Alder Cole.
Okay, so I'd asked a couple of things, Ellen. So this year was 80%. What do we typically see?
Maybe 15 or 20%?
Let's just say 20%. And then the number of voters this year versus, was it four years ago? I think you were adamant said, kind of giving us indication of about the same number of voters, if I remember right?
About 200 voters total less than four years.
So 200 less out of 5,000?
Yeah, about 5,100, almost 5,200. And I have those about 43, I don't have the numbers here, I'm sorry.
That's a pretty small percentage drop. I mean, it's single digits.
Yeah.
Trying to do it in my head, but you know, I think it goes to show that a lot of people know how to vote absentee. I kind of agree with you on, I don't think sending out a mailer to remind them to vote, but I do, I do think, and it, it's interesting, I have teenagers becoming adults, you know, I had one of them vote for the first time this spring. They had no clue. And I think there is definitely an opportunity to train and remind people how they can vote, how they can register, go either go into my vote or coming to city hall and registering during that, I'll call it. What did you call it? Where people could actually come in and vote early and as, as though they were absentee? I, I, I feel like that, that there's an opportunity at the city to advertise a little bit more and like, look how easy it is and you don't have to wait to the actual poll day. And really reduce the numbers. I felt like it was a very safe way to vote. That's how I voted. And it definitely kind of kept the crowds down. So, you know, that's my opinion. I, I really don't think we should be mailing more out. I'm very comfortable with the added expense of mailing out absentee ballots. I think that as someone who's lived overseas and lived in a foreign country that was not a democracy, I very much appreciate our demox, democracy and what it, what it means. And even though my voice is very small, it, it, it has impact. And I am part of our, you know, part of our government, not only being another person, but I just say by voting, it's important that we all do it. So you know, my point is, I really think we just should be advertising more on how easy it is to vote. Thank you.
Alder Cronin, then Alder Cole.
So I have a couple of questions. The first one is, are we aware, are there any state statutes that would prohibit us from doing all vote by mail that we would run afoul of if we tried to do this?
Um, I think we would still have to offer in-person voting on election day. This would be more just mailing out the registration information. The two communities that did it outside of Milwaukee saw more, a small, a couple of percentage people more vote. But they didn't, I guess they didn't get sued, so.
My second question would be, I know we had scheduled two dates, one at the library, one at the senior center for people to have a longer window to vote early. And those both got canceled because those facilities were closed. And then I know Ellen, you offered by appointment. Would that be something that we have the staff capacity to do more of? If it were in the situation in August or November? Where for those people who aren't going to be able to scan their ID, that they would still have an opportunity not to have to come to a public gathering place on election day?
Absolutely, yeah. And, and that was the plan before the COVID came and we, we had to close everything down. But that's, yeah, we could, we could do that at the senior center. We could do it at the library. We could do it at city hall. And those were our plans. But again, because of COVID, we, we weren't able to do that. But on a normal day, yeah, sure, we could do that.
And are you the only person who, when you had those by appointment only, was that only you that could do that? Or is that something that Kayla can do as well?
Oh, no. We have several people who can do that. We can deputize people to do that for us. So they can, it doesn't have to be me or Kayla. Normally we would be there at some point, you know, during the day, but no, we, we have, they're called special vet voting deputies and we can, we can deputize them and yeah, they can do that for us. So our election inspectors and we have so many people are, who are so happy to help. We have such a great team. So we, we don't, we don't have any problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Cole?
I just had a thought. I didn't know, I thought a good way to get information out to people is via their like water utility bills. Like I agree, sending out like mass mailers probably isn't effective, but like for me, like I receive electronic and I pay electronic. Like we could always send like reminders via email that way. But if there are still people who are getting, receiving paper bills, maybe sending checks in. I don't know if there's even a way to data mine that. And if not, that's fine. But if there's a way to like put a little reminder or something, even, even not like a request form, just saying, hey, reminder, go to, you know, my wisconsinvote.gov or whatever in like a little paper reminder in with their utility bill. I just thought that might be a good way to reach people, people via mail without having to pay extra, sending extra like postcards or whatever.
Yeah, and we have talked about that with the utility. With Kimberly in, in the utilities, and they actually now have a newsletter that they send out with the utility bills. So, but the last utility bill came out too late for us to include that because it comes out March 30th. And the election was April 7th. So it was too late for us to do that. But yeah, we are planning, planning to do that with the utility bills.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Seeing, oh, sorry, Alder Journey?
So I'm, I'm just happy that we're talking about this now and that it's a good thing. And that we keep up the conversation on a consistent basis and try to bring about as much public awareness as possible.
I, I agree completely with that. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we will, we'll, as noted, we will probably be coming back to this again. And, and any ideas, thoughts people have to make it as easy and smooth as possible for residents to vote? I, I would definitely like to hear them. With that, we are on item 11, which is adjournment. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Alder Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 I pose no. And we are adjourned at 9:18 PM. Thank you all.